Call the Monday, August 27, 2018. Work session, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker.
Present.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And before we get to our work session agenda, I'm gonna take a personal privilege and recognize Lisa's. Today is her birthday.
It is. She gave five passes. High five.
We have to leave from the fire department. The candles will go on with.
Yeah.
We're honored that you showed up.
We were ready.
Thank you for coming.
Actually.
She was going to miss something.
We could do that. With that, happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do it.
Oh, you came prepared. Oh, he's gonna like him. Listen to Tina.
Better look up.
Well, they had them lit.
Oh, did they?
That she was gonna come in. And he burns his finger.
That's why.
Medic.
That's kinda tough.
I didn't get trick candles.
I'm not sure that this has ever been done before. This is the first. Happy birthday.
Yes. Birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Lisa. Happy birthday to you. Yay. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. The first presentation this evening, Mr. Youssef Kalya, Director of Public Works, will present the city's street paving program. Roads, we also refer to as streets, make a crucial contribution to economic development and growth and bring important social benefits. They are of vital importance to make our city grow and develop. Also, roads provide access to employment, social, health, and educational services. Road opens more areas and stimulate economic and social development. For those reasons, road infrastructure is an important public asset. The second presentation, Mrs. Sherri Neal, Intergovernmental Affairs Manager, will present the preliminary draft suggestions and considerations from staff and citizens for the 2019 state and federal legislative packages. The first legislative presentation is for your discussion purposes only. After tonight's presentation, members of City Council, you will have all of next week to review these items and add any items which you would like to see included. To keep within the legislative package development timeframe, it is important for your input, and we have set the date for September the 5th, for your items to be submitted. The third presentation, Chief Tanya Chapman of the Portsmouth Police Department, will proudly present the department's 2017 annual report. In this report, members of City Council, you will see the police department has experienced significant positive changes in 2017. This report highlights many of the accomplishments and innovations toward improved police services in 2017. And lastly, we will have a briefing from Mr. Michael Ammons, our procurement officer. On your agenda tomorrow night is a public hearing on the city's request for proposals for the outside plant construction of a new municipal fiber network consisting of 52 miles of fiber and connecting 56 community anchor institutions and three internet points of presence. We will begin with Mr. Kalya in the street paving program.
Thank you, Dr. Penn. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, I will provide an overview of the city's street paving program. The city has 881... The city has 881 lane miles of paved streets, which consist of arterial, collectors, and local streets. The city's paving qualifies for maintenance reimbursement from the state. The reimbursement rates from the state to the city are as follows. Arterial streets, 21,690 per lane mile. Example, High Street. Collector residential streets are 12,735 per lane mile. Example, Mount Vernon. We pay between 20 to 22 lane miles a year. The state recommends paving arterial roads every 10 years and collectors and local roads every 12 to 15 years. Economic pavement effects. Here are a few examples of different types of deficiencies that we observe while evaluating our pavement. Alligator cracks, first one. This is caused by asphalt fatigue and overloading. Longitudinal cracking, this is caused by shrinkage in asphalt and other factors. Shoving is mostly occurs at intersections and resembles ripples and cracks in the asphalt. Rotting, this is a depression in the wheel path typically just before an intersection. Potholes, which everybody knows. These holes are in the roadway, vary in sizes, and are caused by expansion and contraction. The largest number of potholes occur during the winter when water freezes and thaws. How are streets selected for paving? There is a process involved when selecting which streets will be paved. These steps ensure that streets in the worst conditions are paved first. We review our maintenance records to determine which streets require the highest frequency of maintenance throughout the year. We review our call and emails, concerns from our citizens. Our staff evaluates and inspects streets throughout the year for deficiencies. Finalizing the paving list. The public works superintendents provide an initial list of streets to be paved after analyzing all data and inspecting streets. Our public works inspector checks and reviews the list, meets with the superintendent as they adjust the list as needed. The public works engineer director meets with the team to review and inspect the proposed streets and finalizes the preliminary list. The preliminary list is sent to public utilities, engineering, and utility companies to ensure that there are no conflicts with scheduled work. After collecting feedback from everyone, the list is finalized and sent to the city manager's office. City staff then coordinates with the contractor to begin paving. Milling operation. Milling is a process of removing the top layer of asphalt. Here are a few reasons why streets are milled. First, to remove distress from the asphalt, to result in a better profile when streets are paved. To recycle milled asphalt, which is beneficial to the environment. Paving operation. Thickness of asphalt varies when paving streets. For example, on arterial streets, thickness of asphalt is typically two inches, and on residential streets, thickness of asphalt is typically one and a half inches.
Questions? Yes, ma'am. The contractor that is used, is there a bid process, or how do you get the contractors, or do we use the same companies all the time?
It is a bid process, and sometimes it's in the bid, we say it's, let's say, one year bid plus an additional year, and as soon this year is expiring, so next year will be a new bid.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you.
All right, we're ready for our next presentation, which is the 2019 legislative submissions. Sherri, Intergovernmental Affairs Manager will make the presentation.
Evening.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I was catching my breath, I just got back in from Newport News.
We have a lot of difficulties with...
Yes, it's not in our box.
And Daniel, you're working on that?
Are they not in the box? Okay. You ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, hi, good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council. This evening, as Dr. Patton stated, I'm going to share with you the submissions that we received from our citizens and our city staff for your consideration for the 2019 state. This is state, but this is also state and federal legislative packages, and I went the wrong way. Come back. What did I do?
There you go.
There you go, all right. So, beginning with the staff's proposed initiatives. We have the reduction of plastic disposable items, and as you know, plastics has been a problem in this country for some time. Plastics with the chemical composition that they're made out of, they don't disintegrate. They've been in our waterways, they've been in our landfills, and so on and so forth. There's been a lot of legislation over time in Virginia to deal with plastic bags, disposable bags, there's been legislation dealing with balloons, letting balloons out in the ocean and the problems it causes the environment there. Unfortunately, none of them have passed, but in other states, they have passed legislation dealing with both of those items. They've even put taxes on disposable plastic bags. It's coming to the problem right now, it's coming to a head, because China's no longer accepting plastic from America, and that's used to take all of our plastics in. And so, a lot of the countries are now looking for alternative sources for taking the plastics. So, this item came from that particular situation. Some states right now are looking at, maybe just looking at straws. Some are looking at plastic bags and straws and other items, so this is what the genesis behind that first item, the impetus for that first item. The second item on there is repealing the felony drug convictions and eligibility for the town of Virginia under this particular code section, so that's either amend or repeal. Currently, in the Virginia code, under that particular section, food stamps, if you have a conviction for distribution, conspiracy to distribute, or attempt to distribute drugs, you are banned from receiving food stamps. That's how it stays in the budget, but since that, I mean, in the code, but since that time, you have welfare and you have food stamps, which are now combined into one program, which is now tannished, from my understanding. So, therefore, if you have one of these type of convictions, you cannot, you're not eligible for welfare or for food stamps, which puts another impediment in the way of people who are trying to resurrect their lives and get them back into society and get them to become contributing taxpayers. It's kinda interesting the way it went in. It came out of a war on poverty back in the '80s, '86, I believe it was, and they only singled out this particular felony. And you could be a mass murderer, you could be an ax murderer, you could be a serial killer, you could be anything else, and you can get stamps, and you can get money. But if you've got one of these convictions for a drug conviction in Virginia, you can't. If you have a misdemeanor conviction in Virginia for possession only, and you are in treatment or you've completed treatment, you're eligible. But if you have a straight-up felony conviction for, like I said, distribution, you cannot. So, that's where that second one is. The next one is amending the code of Virginia to require penal institutions to provide voting rights information, I should say, to your detainees and your people who are coming out of jails. And Illinois and Texas, a couple of other states right now, they're in the process of passing laws requiring that persons who are detained but have not yet been convicted of a felony as of yet are still able to vote, as long as their court cases are not coming up prior to...
The election.
...an election. Virginia already provides for that, it's already in our code, but the persons have to request the information in order to vote, and you vote via absentee voting. So, if your average person who is either detained or arrested or coming out of jail has no idea about voting or voting rights, then they don't, they won't get that information unless they request it. So, this suggestion was that this code section be amended so that institutions would provide that information to folks who are entering the jails or exiting the jails, and it can just be written on a piece of paper, so you don't have to, you know, hold any corrections officer or sheriff or whatever, police officer responsible for not providing the correct information. The next one is the FOIA council study, the threats and expense of fishing expeditions dealing with public personnel records, and it's PII, the publicly identifiable information. In the world that we live in right now, with so much hacking going on, and when a person requests a FOIA, it can request a large amount of data, and when the data's being transmitted, it's not being encrypted in any fashion or any way, and so, therefore, there's no real safeguards around what's gonna happen with this data, who can get ahold of it, if the person who's contacting you requesting the data is legitimate or not, because there's no way to even, to, at this time, to identify that. So, that's where that particular one came from. And the next one would be identify legislative and/or budgetary means by which the state can buy out the ERC contract and/or buy down the tolls, which we've had before. And the last one is the budget amendment request for Mount Calvary Cemetery's complex restoration. We had requested $64,000 last year, but it got caught up in the whole Medicaid expansion, so we've only received enough for the, I think it was $1,300, for just maintaining the graves. So, that thought here is to go back to ask again for the other monies. For your state files, I'm sorry, state policy recommended initiatives, economic development initiatives for the host cities of the Virginia Port Authority. I'm just coming back from a meeting from that. As an outgrowth of our package last year and this last General Assembly session, Delegate James was able to secure a letter from Speaker Cox stating that there was to be a convening of a work group from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, the Virginia Port Authority, and the host cities of the port. So, we've been working together in this work group for the last couple of months, we just met again today, to try to identify some commonalities and some ways to go forward with some economic development incentives that would be specifically for the host cities. So, whatever comes out of that, kind of recommending that we support that effort. The next one, of course, as you can see, is dedicated transit funding. HRT is always in the need of that. Revisit the use of the HR tax funds. Unfortunately, it appears that more and more of the local funds are being used for projects rather than state funds, and state funds are being diverted towards smart scale. So, there's a bit of an imbalance there, so being able to address that as an initiative would be good. And then again, increasing funding for local stormwater assistance program, the Water and Quality Improvement Program, Clean the Chesapeake Bay, because we are an MS4 permitted Assistance, state assistance for 599 funding for local law enforcement, which we all know that has never been fully funded, it's never really followed the formula that was set forth by the General Assembly, so we would like more funding there. Decriminalization or legalization of marijuana, which was in our package last year as well. Reverse and amend 2018 language for the communication, sales, and use tax, and what that means, reverse the amendment for that. The past General Assembly session, what the state did is they took $2 million off the top for to go back into the general fund, and that was not the original agreement that was made with your municipalities and the state when they first took over the program, and they were supposed to redistribute it and give it back to the localities. So, we want that reversed, and that money put back in again. And then, continuing increasing funding for programs for, of course, mental health, opioid, and heroin overdoses. Improving state and local government fiscal relationships, and more funding from the state for K-12 education, because as we all know, localities pay the lion's share compared to what the state puts in. Even though they've increased it, it's still, we're paying the lion's share. On the federal level, policies to support or oppose are listed here, beginning with exploring a name change for the Norfolk Maple Shipyard. The court, the Supreme Court had an injunction against withholding grant funds for sanctuary cities, which was being done, and our sanctuary cities monies was held up for several months because of this particular situation. So, there is some movement at the federal level to probably introduce legislation that would overrule the court's decision, and we would want them to support what the court did, the court injunction. The reversal of net neutrality, which we all are familiar with net neutrality, there's some legislation that's being submitted at the federal level to reverse that administrative ruling. Fairness and accuracy in employment background checks, Act of 28818. This is sponsored by our Congressman Bobby Scott, and the purpose of it is to make sure that any background checks that's done at the federal level are accurate and complete, and that any, so that misinformation is removed, which would help, which would actually bar somebody from getting a job if the wrong information was included. Opposing legislation, limiting time for the city's small cell reviews, and this is a bill that's currently working its way through Congress. Of course, we wouldn't want that, because it's gonna limit us even further as to what the city's input would be on the rolling out of 5G, which was what the small cells are for. And then, monitor and identify and respond to any other issues that may come up that impact local government at the federal level. Okay, then we received a bountiful amount of suggestions from our citizens. They're listed here, and they're listed in two, three sections. The first one are submissions that pertain strictly to the city of Portsmouth, and I won't go through all of these individually, you have copies of them, you can go through at your leisure to decide if you want to do anything with any of these at your level. We have more here. And...
Because we don't do this electronically, can you leave it up there just a little bit longer?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Let me back it up.
Go back to the first one.
I'm trying to back it up. What am I doing wrong?
It's on there. I keep protesters off the street. Keep protesters off the streets.
Next one?
Yeah.
Did I move?
Go ahead.
Okay, there it is. Okay. And on the state level, our citizens have submitted these suggestions for your consideration. And these.
Sherri, what happened to the, that federal flood insurance? I know we put that in last year.
It's still floating around up there, yeah.
Floating around somewhere?
It's still floating around there, yes.
It was a great idea, I thought.
Yeah, we did too, and we actually located some legislation that actually addressed it, two different pieces, one on the Senate and one on the House, but they do not move at the speed of the General Assembly, so...
Any questions?
Okay, your next steps. We're going to provide this information to you, the same way we did last year, so that you can rate, rank rather, between one and five, ones that you want to include, and ones that you don't. And then, on the 10th of September, I'll come back before you with a draft, and also, we would like for you to submit to us, which is not in there, submit any suggestions you may have that can be what forth on the 10th as well. And when I come back before you with the draft on the 10th. And then, on the 23rd, we'll have our joint meeting with our delegation members, and then that evening, we are slated to have you adopt both the federal and legislative initiatives by resolution. And that's it.
The amendment, the amendment and repeal, the... Does it include any statutes that require the...
No, if we amend it, there's two things we can do. We can amend that exception of the code, because the way the code currently reads, again, for certain persons, if they are being treated or in treatment, or et cetera, et cetera, they can be considered to receive services. We can leave that piece in there and just make it so that anybody can receive services, and it doesn't make a difference on your conviction. Now, this came down again from the federal government some time ago, but it also gave states the ability to opt out. And at this point in time, about 36 states have done that, and then out of that number, out of 36 states, you have about 12 to 18 that have a hybrid, and right now, Virginia's hybrid. So, again, for certain ones that aren't for possession, not for possession, for sale, distribution, or anything dealing with distribution, they are exempted, they cannot get anything. That's what we would be changing that part of it. Or we can just repeal the whole section and just let it be silent.
Yes, sir.
I noticed the national discussion on the whole issue dealing with bail for those who are less fortunate, and there's been a discussion about for nonviolent offenders who are low income and unable to pay bail, and it leads to extended incarceration, separation from families. I noticed that that wasn't up there for neither the federal nor state. Is that, is that something we are supporting? I know there's been some discussion across both Democratic and Republican lines in regards to that, so do you know if we are supporting that, or that's something we can submit as an additional consideration?
Mayor Rowe, Councilman Dr. Whitaker, if you're referring to pretrial services, or is that something outside of pretrial?
No, I'm speaking specifically to, and I'm trying to think of this Senator in California who's one of the sponsors, and it's also a Republican sponsor. The whole issue of bail and requiring bail for nonviolent offenses, and the whole issue of separating from families, those who are unable to pay those bails, they remain incarcerated.
I don't have anything on that right now, but it's something you can put with your submission, and we can look at it, definitely.
Okay. I didn't know it.
There's been a lot of issue on pretrial services, there's been a move to get rid of pretrial, and pretrial would really harm folks in that category that you're speaking of, so we've been fighting against that, so...
I have that, and we'll do the research, and we'll send something out to you before your submission on September 5th, so you can consider it.
And can you let us know if... And can you let us know if local delegation or federal delegation, if they are supporting that or not?
We can. We'll research it. We'll get it.
Makes sense, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mrs. McNeil. Our next presentation will be the 2017 Police Department Annual Report by our Chief Tanya Chaplin.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council, Dr. Patton, Mr. Ashby. Once again, good evening. It is my pleasure to present to you the Police Department's 2017, 2018 overview and highlights from our 2017 annual report. But before I do so, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce the newest member of our team, and that is Assistant Chief Renaldo Prince. He has joined us about two weeks ago now as one of the new Assistant Chiefs. So I just want to introduce you and welcome. So as you all may be aware, the mission of the Portsmouth Police Department is dedicated, the Portsmouth Police Department is dedicated to the protection and security of all people and in partnership with our community to providing quality of public safety services while affording dignity and respect to every individual. And our vision is listed as well. These are the principles that we have tried to inculcate in all members of the Police Department and the community. And enhancing our community partnerships and building trust will be the keys to our success. So similar to our core values, which arise, respect, integrity, service, and excellence, I envision a highly ethical, high-performing organization that embraces diversity and treats everyone with respect and dignity. So currently, the Portsmouth Police Department, we're authorized 260 sworn officers. Last year, we had 223,000 calls for service. There are 102 civilians, which includes 33 dispatchers for our 911 center. As of the end of 2017, we had 13 auxiliary officers, but we currently only have 11 and six chaplains. We currently also have 15 safety town volunteers. Our officer vacancies right now stand at 25. We currently have 13 in our field training program and 18 in the police academy. Our dispatchers are currently sitting at 12 vacancies. Our auxiliary hours, they spent 7,312 hours in 2017, which is a cost savings for the city based on an average of $40.50 per hour, amounts to $296,136 in wages. And these figures represent the hours of 10 auxiliary officers, and three were in the academy at the time. Our department is divided into three branches. One is the patrol branch, or operations, criminal investigations, and administrative branch. And each of the sections that fall underneath each of those branches are listed. Additionally, reporting directly to me is our Chief of Staff, which is our newest position. And actually, my Chief of Staff is sitting in the back, Lieutenant Hall. He helps me with all the daily, please stand up, with all the daily activities as far as fielding calls for service or fielding inquiries for the Police Department, helping me, assisting me with writing letters and other responsibilities. Also under him is our Public Information Officer. Also reporting directly to me is my Professional Standards Bureau, which you all know that you're a fine officer that watches over you as a part of that in the training academy. So building trust and legitimacy, that has been our mantra since I arrived two and a half years ago. And we continue meeting with our federal, state, and local officials, civic leagues, faith leaders, churches, business leaders, in order to learn more about one another and work together in partnership. I hold my chief's forms, we're now doing it every other month at our training academy. As you all know from last year, we started the umbrella of the Community Awareness Reduction and Engagement Program, which is CARE. And that's what all of our initiatives pretty much fall under. I continue, we continue walking during our monthly community engagement opportunity walks. Last year, we started a new program. We partnered with the Life Enrichment Center and adopted two schools. We tutor once a week, first and second graders at John Tyler and Parkview Elementary. And I also started real talk sessions with my officers to give them face-to-face contact with me and open the dialogue, so they can have real answers and not innuendos. And also, we started a department newsletter this year. So our violent crime reduction strategies, as most of you know, we started geographical policing about a year and a half ago now. That program seems to be working very well, and our crime stats will reflect that when I get to that later in the program. We continue with our street crimes unit, violent crimes unit, our gang and narcotics unit coordinated response. We continue with our Faith Behind the Badge Coalition. We have about 25 to 30 faith leaders throughout the city that participate in that with us once a month. We continue our Young Adult Police Commissioners Program, which we have a group of high school students where we mentor and engage with them on a monthly basis, trying to get them prepared for life after high school, whether it's military, career, or vocational or college. We also have expanded our police activity league. We do that year-round. We have baseball and football, flag football, and boxing, and cheerleading, and dance, and poetry, to name a few. But we also are excited about our second year of our Powell Summer Camp. We had over 16-plus kids in our Powell Summer Camp. This year, we partnered with Grove Church and their new center, and they hosted us all summer. So thank you to the pastor. But that was a huge success once again. And we received a grant from the Virginia Rules Camp that we talked to them about education on bullying and gun prevention and all kinds of other things that helped them better themselves. We continue our explorers program. Unfortunately, I had to terminate the cadet program. Although we had applicants available, we were doing so successfully, we were doing so well at recruiting regular officers and getting the numbers down. I transferred the numbers from the cadets back to the officers, so we can get officers up and running. So we're not going to pursue that at this time. Nighthawk basketball, we're continuing to partner with Parks and Recs, Culling with the Cop, and of course, our rapid engagement of support in the event of trauma, or better known as reset. And so geographical policing, the next slide will show you what the geographical policing areas, but like I said before, it increases consistency of officer assignments, and it holds them accountable and helps them become familiar with the geographical areas that they're assigned. And it builds community goodwill and trust among the members, the citizens and community. And like I said, the program appears to be working extremely well. And that is evident. And this is the overall crime stats from last year. We had a slight reduction in violent crime last year. It went from 653 to 608 overall. And then, but the property crime increased slightly from 5349 to 4473. But if you look at this slide, and it's harder for you all to read, but overall homicides, currently we're down 15% in homicides. Last year at this time, we had 13, whereas we have 11. And we've cleared five of the 11 cases by arrest thus far. Our rates are up 10%, but that's only by three, although three is too many, one's too many. But we're up 10% going from 30 to 33. Robberies were actually down 17%. And aggravated assaults were up 7%. And that was mainly due to a huge increase of shootings at the beginning of the year. The total violent crimes overall, the city as of August 20th, we're down 2% for the year. Then if you go to property crimes, burglaries, we're actually down 24% year-to-date. I know there was an article or news report about Portsmouth being number one in the state as far as burglaries. What we have learned that all incidents are not reported the same in every city, is what mainly contributes to us being number one. For example, stealing from a detached garage or shed is considered a burglary according to Virginia State Police and IBR standards, but most cities do not capture that. They capture it as a larceny. So.
And what's the difference, again, I know I ask you this every year, but between a burglary and a larceny?
A larceny, a burglary is you actually break into someone's dwelling. And a larceny is you just take something from someone, per se. But some departments count a larceny, if it's not attached to the house, then it's a larceny. If it's in a shed versus, we capture everything as a burglary, so that...
And a robbery is?
A robbery is you take something from a person.
A person has to be involved, okay.
So we can have a fair comparison, why don't we track it like most of the state does then?
Well, we reached out to the state police, and we're in the middle of having that discussion within the Police Department right now. Because some cities track it as we do, and some do not. According to the state police, who we're supposed to be going by their guidelines, we're tracking it accurately. But like I said, we're having that discussion, and we haven't come to a conclusion.
So we're doing it according to the state police?
Correct.
Yes, Mayor, and I'm glad that the chief has shared that. Because when we received this report in regard to Portsmouth being significantly higher, I asked the chief to look at it and see, you know, our partner in cities, how it could be so different. Then she went to the state police and inquired in regard to how the city is reporting and how others. And the state police informed the chief that we are following what the guidelines are in reporting and for us to continue to report correctly.
Okay, so larcenies, we're actually down 11% overall. Motor vehicle thefts are down 17%. And total property crime is currently in double digits and down 14%. So all major crimes, that's violent and property crimes, we are currently at 13% reduction for the year to date. So like I said, have, yes, sir?
Within those numbers, the same thing with homicides and assaults, aggravated assault, are they more domestic in nature, or do you have subcategories?
Right, we have subcategories. I won't say they're domestic in nature, but they're usually familiar with one another, whether it's at a card game, or at a nip joint, or you're at the club, per se. They are, there's a familiarization with the suspect and the victim. But we've had a few domestics, but not overall.
Thanks.
The shootings, I can't say that as much. Some of them are random. I'm sure there are some familiarizations, but we have not made that connection yet. Other questions? And so department highlights over the past five years are actually currently. This year, with the help of City IT, we just completed our new computer aided dispatch system, our CADs, along with our records management system. We're also looking forward to putting up a new radio tower and getting new radios. And thus far this year, or for 2017, we received a total of $354,246,000 in grants.
What is the status of the third bullet, the radio tower?
Would you like to?
Could you, Mr. Jones, to give you an update on that? You could come quickly, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. That project is undergoing the phase of the use permit, which just went through the planning commission, which will be completed. And then we can move the project along once we get that.
This will address the situation in the...
Yes, sir.
And then challenges facing law enforcement, as you know, just continuing to attract qualified candidates, especially in the areas of diversity. Gangs are always an issue, terrorism, because we are a target-rich area. Changing the image and rebranding of policing, I think we've done, made a lot of strides in that area, and staying ahead of the technological curve, which Mr. Jones is helping us advance as we move on.
What makes us a target-rich area for terrorists?
Because of the Navy, the military industry.
What role is Old Dominion University, still playing any role in the mapping and helping with some of the data so that, I guess, we can have more informed information in applying it to the department?
Yes, yes, they are. And as I said to you, when you first came in, Dr. Sumter is our lead in the Violence and Crime Initiative and the data that has been collected. And the piece that they have worked toward, the three high schools and issues as it relates to the surveys, I shared with Dr. Whitaker that Dr. Sumter has been out due to illness. But this morning's call was that she just wanted me to know that she and her team, as school reopens, which I think she said tonight started classes, would begin to move forward on the continuing to complete the work that they have started. And we just got a report from her about a month ago that her intern delivered. So we're continuing to work with them.
How about gang activity? Is that, how's that trending?
We had a major case, actually, my Lieutenant Hall, if you don't mind coming up, he was my gang expert before he was recently promoted. And he had a major gang trial, which they were very successful with. And so if you don't mind, Mayor, I'll let him speak.
Lieutenant Hall.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. Previously, my assignment was the Gang Suppression Unit. And we were partnered with the FBI, and we were able to conduct Rico investigations. Based on a year-long investigation, we were able to indict five individuals, and one later came on. We solved about five homicides all throughout Hampton Roads, as well as, I think, 10 total shootings. And we were able to get those guys locked up for multiple life terms. So that was one of the recent events that got on.
Do you want to talk about anything recent that you're aware of?
Well, the trends nationally are pretty much the same. So basically, anything that goes on in New York is going to be the same here. And that's kind of what we're seeing, that's the biggest influence. Now, there is, because of the internet, a lot of influence from California, as well as Chicago. But mostly, for the most part, we're dealing with Bloods in this area.
But we haven't seen any real gang activity with the shootings or anything, the homicides or anything like this.
Good. How about collaboration with the state police? I know in the past, we've had some real successful drug busts and what have you, that were, we teamed up with the state police. Is that collaboration still there?
The collaboration is still there. We're actually task force members on several federal and state task force, whether it's DEA, FBI, like you said, the U.S. Attorney's Office. So there is regional cooperation with the Attorney General's Office, just everyone. It's just increased so much over the past few years, so.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, you have an item that's coming up, which will be in the City Manager's Report tomorrow night on abatement of criminal blight. In the activities that have gone over the past year, there are some locations that create criminal blight. And Mr. Ashby will be bringing forward, talking with you tomorrow during our public work session about this, which is one of your items, and how in our ordinance, we can, we don't have to wait for the ABC Board, or, you know, ABC Board, you'll say, well, they have an alcohol license, and we've got to work through them to get this place addressed. With this amendment to the code that already exists, police can begin to address those areas where there have been multiple shootings or things that are going on that we just need to get a handle on.
I have a question in reference to the excellent with the filling the vacancies for the officers with the last two academies and the ones that are attending now. But the question is with the dispatchers. You know, they're down, you know, from the numbers we just received, they're down by a third. I don't know what we're doing trying to fill those positions. And, you know, a lot of people, they're kind of out of sight, out of mind, they're kind of some of the unsung heroes, because the police and the fire don't get there unless they get the calls and get the information out. So I'd just like to get some information, and possibly from Dr. Patton as well, is, you know, I don't know what their, you know, compensation... you know, I don't know what their, you know, compensation is. Is that one of the issues? You know, are we competing with other localities? Because, like I said, we don't hear a lot from them. They're there, and people don't understand it, but, you know, I just want to know what we can do to try to fill those vacancies. Because I've, in the past, I've had a couple of calls and complaints about being placed on hold and stuff like that, and I understand it because they are that short. But I'd like to do whatever we can as the city to fill those vacancies.
And, I'm sorry, Greg.
You want to respond?
I can. Maybe Ms. Gooden would be a better person to respond. But as, what I was going to say is, we've worked with City HR, and we are working diligently to fill those vacancies. And Ms. Gooden can elaborate on the efforts we've made. It's just a very challenging position to maintain those individuals.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Councilman Clark, to answer a question, what we've actually done in terms of compensation, we recently, as recent as April of 2018, we significantly increased all the entry-level salaries for the entire 911 dispatcher family. We are currently recruiting for our 911 dispatcher. The current entry-level rate is 31,411. We increased it from, I think the increase went probably about, I mean, about approximately $5,000. As of this morning, we had received 143 applications for our 911 dispatcher position. We're currently working with Chief Chapman and members of our team to really come up with kind of a very comprehensive recruitment process. What we plan on doing is, actually, when we bring the candidates in, we're going to test them on critical. When they successfully pass their critical, so they'll take their critical exam, which is a typical exam or test you would have people do. It's just, it's really interesting. I kind of equate it almost like a video, give a lot of different information. When they pass that, we're immediately going to move them same day. They're going to be on an interview panel. We'll have our oral boards. Once they get them through our oral boards, if that's something, if the panel decides, hey, we want to move forward with them, immediately before they leave the premises, we're going to have a HR staff person speak with them. We're going to begin and start the background process. We anticipate filling all the vacancies in a relatively short period of time. So, and I think with the increase in our ranges, we've gotten sufficient applications. But you're true to form, the 911 dispatcher is a position that in our area, that's been, there's been challenges for everyone. But I think our compensation, we are right up there with everyone else now, and I think we will see some really positive results.
Great, thank you.
And we've also looked at whether or not we could have some regional collaboration, so maybe your area, we could collaborate, because it is a shortage across Hampton Roads, so.
Just curious, this may be for the City Manager, but the relationship between those who are committing crimes and mental disabilities, how is that being tracked, and then how is it, is it being referred over to Behavioral Services?
That may be more of the Sheriff's Department. That's not something we necessarily track. No, ma'am, no, sir.
So, does the city?
We could, we could ask that question of Sheriff Moore and try to see if that is being tracked. And I do know that he, his team is working with Behavioral Healthcare, but I'd like to get more information for you on that.
And I think we might want to get information from the regional jail as well, because I think the majority of the mental health patients from the Portsmouth, they send them to the regional jail, and they're working with that, so we can address that, too. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Dr. Whitaker, this may address part of your question. I believe quarterly now, we have crisis intervention training, which deals with mental health issues and incarceration issues. That training extends to police department, Sheriff's Department, Hampton Roads Regional Jail. It has BHS personnel, as well as social services. In that training, that quarterly training, there's a segment that deals with mental health and civil liability, which my office conducts that part of the assessment. But there's also modules in that training coming from the Maga Straits Office, from social services, from experienced police officers, scenarios, and that sort of thing to identify the issues surrounding it. So, that when we interact from a law enforcement standpoint to individual with mental health, we don't exacerbate issues that we understand. And that has been, I would say, that's the legal standard now. But you'll see, we conduct that quarterly on a group of 20 or some odd people from all of those organizations on a rolling basis.
Questions?
Maybe this is a Sheriff Moore question, but, but you're here. I've heard the sheriff mention in the last few months that, about booking, which is something this council has had a lot of conversations about over the last few years. I understand he has taken back over some, or all of the booking process?
All of booking.
So, so that means the officers are just bringing them in?
Correct.
Dropping them off and back out on the street?
I don't know if it's that simple.
They're not spending a couple hours doing book?
That's correct. They fill out whatever necessary paperwork to turn it over to the Sheriff's Department. They complete the booking process. So, that has alleviated a lot of the time for the officers to be able to get back on the street.
But they are still impacted if a person is TD.
A TDO.
TDOed.
Temporary detention order.
Has to stay with that person, and wherever there is the bid available, it may be in Charlottesville, wherever it is, or Richmond, then that officer has to take that citizen or individual to wherever the bid is. So, that takes time.
Yeah, that's correct.
And that's a, I think the state code requires, actually, the Sheriff's Department is supposed to be doing that transport. So, I don't know, sometimes, maybe if they had transport deputies available to let them do that transport, once the TDI, TDO is issued, so that way, we can keep officers here on the street instead of...
I'll have to double-check, but I think the state code changed and put the responsibility back on us. That's how we...
Because I know when I was in another jurisdiction, they would call us out of the jurisdiction to pick them up and transport them for that reason, so.
Yeah, I think the sheriffs were influential in getting that changed.
Little Sheriff's Association.
Yes, that one.
And it, and we have had instances where we have had five to six police officers waiting at Maryview because of a TDO. And we're waiting, you have to wait until wherever the bid becomes available. And that, again, says how major our mental illness challenges are, not only in our city, but across the country. I'd also like to add, Mayor, that for the first time in our HR department, we now have our wellness coordinator certified as a...
Certified in mental health first aid.
Certified in mental health first aid, to actually talk with individuals who may be in the workplace and has some challenge, and want someone to talk with, and then can make a recommendation. So, we have that certification, and that was in your report back. And in addition, this past week, we visited a, we visited Clark Nexum. And while we were on the visit of their building, there was this area, and the person who was showing us around the building, it's a modern building, we were looking at our space plan for a new city hall. The gentleman showed us this room, and he said, this is the room where the counselor comes to work with staff who may be having differences. And so, both Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Wright, and I kind of looked at each other to wonder what he's talking about. And he says, now in the workplaces across the country, these rooms are being set up so, and we hire a full-time counselor. So, if I'm working with Mr. Clark, and we have a difference of something, and we seem like we can't resolve it, then we go and call the counselor, and we go to the room, and then we talk it through until it's resolved, and then we go back to our workplace. And we are saying, eventually, that is going to be required at workplaces probably across the nation and municipal governments. So, we've taken our first step, and we do have that certification.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add one more thing. We are finally ready to release our lip sync challenge. We're having our premiere this coming Thursday at the Commodore Theater at 11:00 sharp. So, if you all are available, we would love for you all to come by and look at our lip sync.
Would you say the time and place again?
11:00 a.m. on Thursday, was that the 30th, August 30th, at the Commodore Theater. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Mayor, we're going to ask, members of council, we're going to ask Mr. Ammons to come up, and just to give you a brief overview of the item that's on your agenda tomorrow night relating to the fiber network.
This is the public hearing that's tomorrow night.
Yes, yes.
And this is Agenda Item Four.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you, as Mayor, as a City Manager said earlier today, we solicited a project under the PPA, Long Term Virginia Public Private Educational Infrastructure and Facilities Act of 2002, amended by Portsmouth City Code, for an IT infrastructure fiber project. The law requires that we hold a public hearing to let the public see the proposals that we receive. We posted a notice in the Virginia Pilot. We published it two times, one on August the 19th, and one on August the 26th, outlining that the city has a public hearing tomorrow, August 28th, at 7:00 p.m. That allows the public a chance to review the proposals, to come in and make comments. We've also published those proposals on our website and made them available in my office for people to come and see if they wanted to review them. Okay, all right, any questions?
Any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, why did you pursue it through the public-private process instead of just a regular, open-bid process?
Okay, sir. Because of the different, the ability to have a more competitive financial structure, the ability to add additional conditions to this solicitation, we decided to use the PPA to do this.
So, as far as the financial structure of the project, that was not attainable through an open-bid process?
I know, sir.
So, also, so therefore, if you're doing it through public-private, does now the city lose some of the control to the private entity?
I know, sir.
So, the city still has the same type of control it would have if it were done through an open-bid process?
Yes, sir. The city still maintains that. The Public-Pprivate Partnership Act was designed to allow more creative, more creative, more creativity for folks to come in and actually expand upon what we're allowed to do under the regular, you know, Virginia Public Hyman Act.
So, the, so the city, in a public-private scenario, the city still has some control over subs?
Yes, sir.
So, so it's not the private developer's master plan that dictates that?
I know, sir.
How many proposals did you receive?
We received six. I'm sorry, I missed that, but we received six. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, again, at this level and at this stage, this is a public hearing for public comment. There is no required action by City Council at this point. It is merely an opportunity for the public to review the proposals, come in and make comment on the project or the proposals that they have or have not seen.
And this public hearing is required by state code?
It is. City ordinance also.
This is to my colleagues, I think it would be good for this explanation, be giving at the start of the public hearing tomorrow before I open it.
7:00.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
So, when we get that?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask you to offer an explanation. You can bring your mic.
We'll be ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that concludes our items for tonight on the regular day.
We do have a need for a closed session. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for discussion of assignment, appointment, or salaries, City Council appointees. We have a motion that's been made in due diligence, and discussion. Madam Kirk, will you call the role, please?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasburg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Row.
Yes. And we are now in closed session.